Good evening. We're gonna start by having Deb, everybody on Zoom identify themselves. Go ahead, Deb.
Deb Tingway, town clerk, town bookkeeper.
Deb Barlow, treasurer. Assistant clerk.
Dave Gallo, you with us?
Dave Gallo, taxpayer.
Summer Cat, select board.
Ned Connell, town administrator.
Scott Brier, select board.
And Freddie Madden, resident.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order of October 4th, 2021 at 6:01 PM. Changes or additions to the agenda, I believe Phil has an addition to the agenda discussion about.
Cause this isn't on here, right, David?
No, it is not.
Okay, so we need to add under other business discussion about the San Suzy News VT appraisal. Um, letter.
Let's add that in as I recommend, adding that it is item C for the.
For the other business?
Yeah.
Okay, item C. Item C or A1?
C.
We have a C.
Oh, A, B, C, D, E, F.
Well, those are all the D and E are gonna take a very long period of time, so I think it should be super. But either way, it's fine.
Okay, I just put it on his app because we can skip around to that point.
Correct.
Shift everything.
Right, yeah.
Just David Gallo.
You can. Allow for public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Scott.
Yes?
Scott. Hello?
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I'd like to discuss the filling of our town property at 269 Main Street. And why that fill hasn't been removed from our property. I don't know if you want to do that in executive session or not. Could go to legal eventually.
Is that with Tingways?
Yeah.
Over in the storage area, it's still there?
Yeah.
I don't think it needs, at this point, I don't think it needs executive session because he, Tony knows that we are less than happy with this stuff being on our land. As he hasn't made any attempt, David, to take it off.
Let's put it in on the.
He ain't done nothing, he ain't gonna do nothing until we tell him to.
Another business, we'll discuss it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll add that also as an agenda item under other business. E.
C, E, F, G.
Okay.
Anything else, Dave?
I should be good.
Okay. No other public comment, we'll move to number four, proposal for a new weather vein on Elijah Cleveland Meeting House, formerly known as the Coventry Community Church. Estimated cost is, we have a rough estimated.
We have a rough estimate at this point of $1,000. And I would recommend it in talking to Jan Uladowski. That we put aside 1,500 for that and does everybody have the sketch that might go on the table? He recommends that done out in copper and it can, once he puts the top, top part of the steeple back up with the bender and whatnot. That it can be added.
No, I don't have the sketch.
Yeah, you didn't send it here.
You know that, Rob?
Oh, I've, I emailed Dave, I don't know if Dave can bring it up on the computer, a picture of what that weather vein should look like. That, that whole tower is basically the same as Chelsea's church.
Yeah.
Dave, is there any way you can bring that up on the? Screen for everybody?
No, I mean, it's, it's in my other account.
Is it, David, David Gallo, is it an arrow, a standard like North Arrow?
Looks like some kind of arrow with a, it's got some ornate steelwork at the bottom too.
Yeah, Phil's gonna be able to bring up this rough sketch, it'd just take him a few minutes, so we'll, we'll come back to the sketch of, of this. Weather vein.
I sent Jan the pictures there.
Yeah, Jan, David, Jan sent through a, a drawing with some dimensions on it based on your photographs.
I don't, I don't have that drawing in front of me.
Okay, he said it just in today.
Basically, it's the shaft, like the shaft that we found upstairs, I, I don't know if you were there. When Dave Barlow, myself.
He can see.
And Ned, and Ned, Ned were there. I guess Phil will get a sketch of it here in a second. But I definitely think, I, I personally feel it's a good idea to get that back up.
Yeah. Was it on there before?
Yeah, one, yeah, you sent them a picture of it, right, David?
It came down.
Hang on, I'm gonna email it to you right now.
Basically, he's using your picture and he's gonna copy that to the best of his ability. Arrow to be designed or based upon photo. 12 inch diameter copper ball, a three and a half inch diameter copper ball.
You're saying a photo, so that was the one from Miller's collection, which was pretty hard to see, you couldn't see the work at the bottom, I'm not gonna waste much more of our time on it.
He, Jan was very thorough on making sure they had a, a cap for the weather to prevent it from going into, down into the steeple. It's not a drip, it's a cap on it.
Welded flashing disc. That's welded to it, spins with the weather vein, but it's above the hole so that the water doesn't go down.
Yeah. So it remains relatively weather tight.
So, I, I found that picture as well, David, but I guess, has it been forwarded up there? The picture David sent out captures the various elements in addition to the weather vein that are normally present on these things. And probably were present on this pole at one time.
Does it look like this sketch or you haven't seen this sketch, Steve?
Oh, I haven't seen the sketch, no, but I think I'm about to.
You're about to.
Did you guys receive my email, just barely?
I, I'm not on that computer, David, so I can't get email where I am.
Phil's looking. But I guess we're, we're all talking about the same thing, it's just the, the look, I guess we wanna. We wanna have it look like the look of the photo that you sent, Mr. Gallo.
I would think everything about Chelsea Church is exactly the same as ours, I think when you look at it and you blow, if, if you've got my email, you can blow that picture up, I believe. But everything about that's, that. Tower and bell and I believe the clock, they're all the same. So I would assume that's what was originally there.
Are you zooming in? And then you can show the photo that we have? David wants to see, but I can do this. Are you gonna put on the screen? What you now already charge for your computer capabilities? All right, do you have, can you open his email? Cause I can look at the, his email and compare it to this photo, and we could just, we can just mention to Jan that we wanted to match exactly what you provided us, David.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then he can. Kinda does look like that, except for the. It's not so fancy on the arrow, but that one's, and this one has a ball, so what he's proposed different than that.
Can you enable sharing?
Enable sharing?
Yes.
I'm trying to get the scan so I can send it to you, Dave.
That's all right, if you guys think it's close, just go with it.
No.
Yeah, it would have to match what the pole was originally designed to hold, which might have been something somewhat simpler, but. It's consistent with what Jan has described to me, of some sort of ball and an arrow.
Yeah.
Small ball.
You know, sharing screen.
An upper ball, a smaller, a smaller upper ball like the size of a baseball, and then. A bigger copper ball below the size of a bowling ball, and then the arrow in the middle, but the arrow is not fancy like the, the pictured. David Gallo has provided.
You guys all have the sketch and you're fine with it, I'm good, guys.
Well, I kinda like it, I like it to look more like the picture you sent, the one you sent looks really nice.
Yeah, I'm sure that's probably originally how our whole tower looked, steeple, whatever you wanna call it.
Well, did you provide Jan, Ned with that sketch?
Yeah, he got the photos from, I believe he spoke directly to David and got the photos from David.
So I wonder why his sketch.
So I'm thinking the photos you're talking about are some I had Miller send me, it's not the same as what I just sent you.
Oh, okay, all right.
So what we'll do is. Let's approve the weather vein to look like the photo that you just sent us tonight.
Sounds good.
Right, you guys like that one? Or as close as possible?
So that is what it was in the old, yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty.
Yeah.
Not that what he's proposing wouldn't, wouldn't work either, though, but. So I make a motion that we. Approve. Up to $3,000 for a new weather vein. For the meeting house to look similar to the photo. On that Dave Gallo provided that we're gonna provide. To Jan. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, moving on. Proposal for a new replacement bell deck and steeple of Elijah Cleveland Meeting House. So after he cleaned up all the pigeon shit, his original contract was to replace the outside skirting. And he's determined now, he can't really tell with all the pigeon shit, but he, on there, he's, he's saying that it's eventually gonna leak and now it would be a good time to. Replace it. He gave us the cost of $4,000 to replace that, and I guess I just need. See if everybody's.
Is replacing the decking underneath this steeple?
Replacing the decking, yes.
Underneath the bell deck area was filled with pigeon.
Probably rotted right now.
And well, no, he's taken an ice pick to it and he said it was punky, going to go bad, once we have everything off, we might as well do it now. Only gonna be 4,000 rather than that, let's do it on, again, there was a good deal to do it now, 4,000 to me sounded very reasonable to do that. New timbers and decking for that level of, and also resecure and tighten up the whole weather resistance of that whole structure.
So. I make a motion that we. Approve the estimated cost of $4,000 to replace the deck in the steeple of the meeting house.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
All right.
I.
So is that, is that covered up there now? Not that it's gonna rain this week, but.
Well, it's a cap on there too.
Yes, there's some.
It won't leak the way it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, moving on, number six, ARPA funds, ARPA funds that we're gonna.
I.
Tell us about them there.
Okay. Sorry. The first page essentially have nothing that's, yes, nothing that's gonna apply to it, we're by some personal protective equipment, but we're pretty secure here. If you flip to the second page, the infrastructure and the revenue replacement, we didn't really have any dramatic losses in revenue, so. The infrastructure is all clean water and drinking water and broadband. I would suggest that we bring in Dom and people from the village area and speak about what, how we can use our. Or some portion of our money to help with the village area improvement. This is both for economic development purposes and for, you know, all overall water quality purposes. The one that I see can be helped is the, as David was referencing, the, the oil that the Tangays have, or Tony Tangay has spread out company with his new. Storage bins on Main Street, we can improve that, that stormwater with this money because it's raining across Main. Turns on his property, we can improve our property, make sure that that drainage is strong work.
When was that decision made?
Pardon?
What?
When was that decision made?
What decision?
The decision has not been.
No decision.
No decision, that's a.
That's a recommendation, after Ned went and met with him, there's the storm drain that comes across in front of there.
Quite aware of it.
I know.
Yeah.
Why are we changing?
Well, actually, we have no obligation to change because it's clearly obvious to anyone that that storm drain or that ditch. Regardless of how new or old the, the storm drain system is, has been at that location for a very long period of time.
I don't see why we can't look into that, though. You got somebody from the community coming to us asking if they, we could do something with it and.
You have somebody coming to you from the community that's illegally filled on our property, and now we've provided them with, um. Now we're providing them with legal advice through our attorney.
No, we're getting legal advice on how we can take care of a storm drain that is ours onto their property.
It's not our, it's not our battle, it's his. We're giving him legal advice.
Not with infrastructure, that's a town infrastructure.
Given, we should be giving Nate Smith, uh, legal advice.
David, we never gave him legal advice.
We haven't given him legal advice at all.
I went down, you know, it was.
You've gone to Brian Monahan, haven't you?
Yes, I have.
So we're giving him legal advice on how for us to correct things, it's not us, up to us to correct anything.
No, and, and he knows, and he knows full well, and we have no obligation to do anything there, I made that very clear to him when I was there speaking to him. That regardless of whether it's on his deed or not, it was clearly obvious that that has been there for at least 100 years. And Brian Monahan has backed me up on that in his advice to, to us.
I'd like to see Brian Monahan's advice, and I also wanna see the cost of that advice.
All right.
Offer me.
Yes.
Okay, so. As far as these funds, this. 315,000. We have a deadline to use the money by 2024?
24, yeah, actually, we need to use it by, I mean, to obligate it by that.
So I have, I have a question because, and it's either Ned or David Barlow. I just saw an email yesterday from VLCT. That makes, that reads to me that you had project and expenditure report by, it was supposed to be October 31st, but they changed it April 30th. Did you, either one of you guys get that email?
Yes, I, I can address that, that's correct. Uh, the feds have changed the, the report due date into, um. Next spring, so.
What's that report, is that what we're using it, doing with?
Well, eventually, but it's what we've done with it to date. Which at that point probably will be not much.
Okay, I would, I didn't know if that was, we had to figure out what we're doing with it by.
No.
This point, okay.
It's just they, I know that we set the money aside in this account.
So I'm attending a VLCT conference this week virtually, and it's delightful. Uh, but it's, today was focused on these funds in particular, and among other things, how to account for them in Nemrick. So, um, I'll be of making some Nemrick adjustments, if you will, to account for them the way they have specified. And I'll be happy to report on that at the next select board meeting. None of that's really a big deal, we, we deal with that kind of thing with our other funds all the time. I would like to point out that two points, the item number six, revenue replacement, that's listed on as a, a valid use of the funds. I think it highly likely that we will qualify for this, as will most towns. There's a formula that's, the, the feds have published, Department of Treasury, and the state of Vermont's coming up with its own calculator, but. Based on my read of that formula, it, it would appear highly likely that we'll qualify for that. Even given that our revenue comes from landfill tipping fees. I'm fairly certain we'll find there was an impact from COVID on that revenue. And these funds can be used to replace that, but what exactly that number will be, I don't know yet, it'll be a little bit before we can figure that out. But I, I don't wanna just kinda sweep that one by and say, oh, we didn't lose any revenue. We, we almost certainly will qualify under whatever formula ends up being the official Vermont approved version. Uh, so on revenue replacement. The other point is, the state of Vermont has announced that they're separately going to put $100 million of ARPA money, not the funds they provided us, but a separate 100 million against water projects. So I sent that note to the fire district and advised them to investigate thoroughly because it looked like it would apply directly to them. So this, yeah, whole thing continues to develop, and it will continue to develop. And a point from VLCT made many times today is, don't be in a hurry. It'll. We've got a bit of, bit of time to let this develop, and it's good to get out the good idea fairy and try it out, the good ideas, and.
Yeah.
Let's hear them.
Yeah.
But. So I'll, I'll provide more as I get it.
So, it's something that could be discussed at town meeting, but that would probably really drag out really long, I don't, no, we, yeah.
We probably have a clear proposal.
Yeah.
People on having music.
Have you been allocated all this art money already, or do we, don't we have to go back to reimbursements officially?
We, we have, it's coming in batches.
I got you.
Two?
Two.
We've already received, we've already received one.
One batch, but I don't know how much.
Yeah, we've already received one, and then we're gonna get David, it, it comes in, but.
If it comes.
It's one of those, it's not a reimbursement like a lot of the Fed money is, it's a, here you go, have it, but you gotta prove that you used it under the rate.
If not by this year.
We're gonna pay back.
Right, yeah, if you want, I can, I can lay that out, cause that's one of the things we know definitively. Uh, this year, we have received two different deposits, one was specifically from what the feds allocated to town funds, and the second came from what they allocated this. Uh, county funds that the state then redistributed because the counties don't really do much in the state, so we have received that for fiscal year 2022 that we're currently in, it is half, exactly half of the amount shown on the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, the other half will come next year, fiscal year 23, probably about the same time.
Okay, and the half that has gone now, does that money have to be allocated by 23, because I've heard.
24, yeah.
24.
The whole, obligated.
So David, are you suggesting if this thing holds, that. When they, when they have it totally formatted and. They have the, they have the blueprint laid out, are you thinking that possibly this money could be received in number six under revenue replacement? And then it, it can just go into our fund under revenue replacement, and then we can allocate it where we wanted to go at any point in time? With no deadlines at all?
That's roughly correct, yes, the, whatever we determine is actually revenue replacement, and I, again, I don't know what that number would be yet. Then can be put in the general fund to be expended like any other general fund monies, with one caveat, we can't use it for. Plumping up retirement funds, but since we don't really have that as a thing in the town, we don't need to worry about it.
Okay, so that would probably be the, that would be a good category to be able to put the funds into this, into the general fund if, if it qualifies.
I would think so as a preliminary. Best guess.
Okay.
But if we have, say, some emerging. Federal grant or state grant that requires matching funds that would, ARPA would do, and it's a big thing and we wanna do it. Yeah, we might change our minds on that, so I'd say it's one of the good ideas at this point. And I'll certainly be thoroughly investigating the revenue replacement because that's, that's kinda what, right up my alley is treasure.
Thank you very much.
Dave. Hey, Dave.
Yeah.
You mentioned, uh, that another 100 million had come in for our water systems specifically.
At the state level, yes.
So would those monies be distributed our way or no?
Well, if we came up with a water project, which could be, uh, I, I presume we wouldn't be anything, into anything the fire district does with, with clean water, but, with fresh water, but. It also could do, uh, septic or wastewater types of things, uh, I think it even does flood stuff, but I'd have to verify that. But yes, and, and there's, this is even so, this is so new that there's almost no guidance on it yet, except a publicity announcement from the state saying they're gonna put, throw $100 million against it, so.
I guess where I was going was, you, we've, we've spoken a little bit about what a nightmare that could be from accounting perspective if we're playing with a fire district, could they get the funds separately from us?
That's why we sent that over.
Yes, and I, I, again, I, yeah, I would, I learned much more today about, from the accounting of that, and I can say as treasurer, I would absolutely not. Sign over money to a second provider, uh, there's an official word for it, and I'm, it's escaping me at the moment, but signing over these funds to somebody else, I still have to account for them. And, and they have to be used in the same federal law prospects, and I, I'm like, no, you know, that, that needs to be under, when we expend these as a town, they need to be under our direct control as the town. Uh, so I'm actually quite happy that the state's gonna throw 100 million against water stuff, and that's specific to what the fire district does and, and.
Right, they should reach out there.
Yeah.
When they.
That's why, that's why he sent that.
Yeah.
They probably can't tell. Any other number?
Oh, well.
Yeah, you know, they're gonna have trouble right now trying to investigate that whole product, cause it's so new. That, you know, there's several months behind where we are now with what we're doing right now, talking about this, this fund of ARPA, so that's gonna take a while to develop into some sort of. Reasonable thing that people can figure out how to access it. So there'll be some uncertainty to follow on that 100 million as well.
Arthur has a hand up.
Yep.
Biden says, yep.
Okay, hi, so, um, I, it was kinda cutting out, so the, the money is earmarked for loss of revenue and for infrastructure projects?
That's one of, that's one of the things that you can use. There's multiple, two or multiple other economic support, sorry. There's, uh, did you send that in the email?
Yeah, there's, there's seven very broad areas that you can use the money in. Yeah, there's there's seven very broad areas that you can use the money in.
And one of them is revenue.
Revenue replacement.
Replacement, yes.
So is that the state guidelines you're looking at, Phil?
Yes.
Uh, no, these are, these are from the US Department of Treasury. They're right from the feds themselves.
Um, is there some way somebody can email that to me, so I can kind of?
You know, that in your thing.
Yes, it should have been emailed to you, Martha, when I sent agendas on Friday.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was attached. I I apologize, I just got done doing wood, so I've been playing catch up preparing for winter, so I'm really not prepared for this meeting. Um, as much as I'd like to be.
I don't, I don't see her address in your email, unless you're doing a blind copy.
Blind copy.
You should be blind copying everybody, so.
Well.
Why all don't happen?
And so my my other question is, um. With having to account for that, I think David kind of hit uh treasurer Barlow kind of hit it on the head. Um, if them funds are um. Given to another municipality, how do how do you account for them? So I think kind of David kind of hit it on the head, like, would it have to be uh on? I asked it, would the voters have to approve to give it out to the fire district? So.
Yeah, Martha, I don't have an answer on that one yet. It it's certainly a valid question. Uh, it just hasn't cycled around yet in the conference, but it will.
Well, that's what I was figuring. So you kind of hit the second part, though, where it was um where I was asking if it was specifically earmarked, if it had to be infrastructure. So that that was my other thing. I didn't realize that was um you could do loss of revenue.
Yeah, there's actually seven very broad categories. So when you get that list, you'll see there's there's a wide variety of things.
Okay, and um, thank you, David, for for that. And also, I just would like to point out that the fire district does not have a quorum. So they can they can talk all they want, but let's face it, Dom's going on almost a year of doing by himself, running a municipality. And with no hope in sight, as he put it, um, of finding another member, so um I I don't know. Um, I'm assuming that the the um guidelines of when you have to earmark the project money would be in what um in that document? With the um eligibility requirements?
Uh, no, I mean, realistically, it would need to happen probably by twenty sometime in twenty twenty-three. Uh, it depends on how shovel-ready the product project is. I mean, it's kind of hypothetical, but there's no, at at this point, you're still two years at least away from having those kind of deadlines.
Okay, that that's where I was kind of, that's exactly where I was going with that. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
So just a quick note on here about, so two thirteen seems quite broad with other economic support. And that just seems like if you come up with any projects that would actually serve the community, if you could potentially pass along some justification for it.
Correct.
And that's where you were getting at as far as, you know, that kind of stuff.
Correct.
And so six point one, David, it says it's provision of government services, the loss of new from the dump actually countless of countless government services?
I didn't quite.
Just fix though, just number six is just revenue place, six one is government.
Right. So I'm assuming, I don't think, I think. Six and five is. It is, but I don't think it's, well.
I think it's still under.
Under, okay.
Yeah.
This has got to change probably five more times.
Yeah. So let's, there's a, there's an entire document from the Department of Treasury and written in good treasury speak. Goes on for many, many pages, specific to this topic, revenue replacement. Um, it's available in various ways. Uh, if somebody really wants it, we can set it up, put it on the website.
I'll I'll do the research. I actually found the website and I did a quick uh scan of it, and yeah, you're right, there's a bunch of stuff on there, but.
Have you fallen asleep to it yet? You didn't hear me?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Sleeping.
Yeah, you're sleeping, yeah.
All right, so, okay, well, I think we've we've talked about the upper funds enough, but this point, it's still wide open. There's still plenty of time, and there's still a lot of learning for Mr. Barlow to do to pass on to the rest of us.
Yikes.
All right, other business. A resignation of Sue Kelly Harkey from the planning commission.
Everyone has her letter, she's resigned in various topics. I won't go into them at this point. Uh, but we, she's resigned, and we need, what it says for the, we need to find a new member.
So we need to put an ad in and get it.
Yes.
New letters of interest or whatever it's called.
Correct, you need to put an ad out, letters of interest, and then go from there. And I'm sure we'll be able to find someone.
Someone will.
I'm sure. I have an interest involved here in the audience today.
That's a bummer.
Now, at one time, wasn't Pedro Pagan has like a first um. Oh, what do we classify him as?
Was that us doing that, or was that a town meeting?
That was after the town. No, that was you guys, anyway.
Yeah, I think you did.
See, I had, I I I remember.
Alternate, that's the word.
If that one decided not to, right? Is that what it was? Or was it an alternate down the road?
No.
I think alternate down the road.
Yes.
So he.
He, no, he is not first in line for this real, this appointment is definitely, is not, is an alternate. You can submit a letter of interest to be bumped up.
Okay.
Don't worry, okay, I guess I'm confused on that.
Well, why don't you look into it? We'll review it and send out a notice.
Yeah, I'll send out notification and intro to the slide board.
Just on the filling our spots, as Martha mentioned, have we gotten anybody for the water district?
We had the one who was a no show and has not.
Did they move?
I, his house is for sale, but he's moving into his other house, so.
So I'm having a hard time hearing. We haven't followed up on that. Um, we stated that we were gonna reopen the search, so.
Yeah.
I know it seemed like probably a moot point, but uh, why wouldn't we throw another postcard out there?
That you did do that.
Nope, we were planning on doing it, and I was going to do it this weekend, we will.
Oh, okay.
We will do it.
All right, so.
I thought so, I saw something in the uh.
All right, so send out another postcard for a fire district member. All right. Okay, so during other business, we're gonna go to C, light lighting at Lady Bird Park. We talked about that last week. Do we get clarification?
I, we have not gotten clarification on the lighting from P Trans as of now. Yes, Martha, we know front desk is going into business. The uh, the feature, Jason at P Trans has not communicated back to me. They are, their proposal was for telephone poles, if they want to get out telephone poles, that was not.
Let's hope I'm not looking.
For it, it was just. Uh, he has not communicated back to me. I will contact Jason tomorrow and they. Find out what his plans are.
So when you talked to him, was it asked what if we provided our poles?
Yes, I said we should provide our own light poles per D D P Trans guidelines, and I assume W B to break, you know.
Nice.
Nice ones.
Like at the high school.
One and.
Yeah, I mean, not a high school, the school, yeah.
So there's some decorative ones at P Trans in the highway, right away. There's no reason why we can't get this done like this. Providing all poles and then providing the construction costs.
We talked about the electricity cost too. Who picks up the bill on that?
They, they were gonna pick up the whole cost, because it's their thing.
I think we need to have Jason on the meeting.
Yes, I will invite Jason.
Yeah, let's get him here, because then we want to ask him to see if they wanted to just give us the park.
Yes.
That's not.
Jason can't make that decision.
No, but he can, he, we could ask that we're interested.
Jason would love to give that park to us, but it's always, it's always gonna come right back to uh the Parks Department of the State of Vermont.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll invite him either way.
Should we invite the Parks Department to come, or just get him a letter stating that we're interested?
Why don't we ask Jason that question?
All right, we'll start with him.
We'll stop there.
If he says it's not even worth it, then.
Yeah.
All right, so he'll get back to us. We'll put this on the agenda for next agenda, okay? Other business, D, Australian batlet article for town meeting twenty twenty-two.
I kept that on there too, that we can continue to discuss it and make sure it stays on our radar. No additional changes, but we do need to make sure it ends up as an article in the morning for the town meeting in March of twenty-two.
Deb, have you had gotten any more information from state on the guidelines on town meeting? Have they made any decisions like as far as COVID and in person or not in person?
Until there's an emergency declaration, there won't be anything.
Exactly, yeah, no, they have not. Um, definitely, as soon as they do hear stuff, they are bringing it up to our attention. I will be going to another training in November where they will be at that training again. So I would imagine we'll probably receive an an update at that training as well, but like I said, they have been extremely good in getting information out to us. As soon as they hear or any new um legislation that's being passed, that gives us some of these differently ways. Um, they are absolutely listening to all clerks, listening to all of our concerns. They're taking a look at what the current uh Vermont. I don't know if you want to call it like the history or current status is. And they're just basically right now, sort of like with the ARPA funds, just sort of sitting and waiting and just seeing where it's gonna go.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the pandemic.
Okay. That's all, okay. Other business, moving on to E, plaques, memorials and awards along the hallway of the community center. We had, we discussed this, um, we have a few that some people were not happy that they weren't put back up and um.
We should, I would suggest that we have a special meeting during daylight hours, even if it's a Saturday afternoon, but daylight hours. Invite Richard Lujer and various people, because there's people who want, there's awards in back for the fire district that they want. Hung outside our office, my office, and various locations. We just need to have like, okay, these go here, these other awards go here, they're stacked up like this. This award goes outside the plaque. I just need some direction from the board to say these go here, this goes there.
So can you do that independently, like spread out all the awards and media of the plaques and and do that independently, get them all out? And then have whoever is concerned about these plaques, call them in and, you know, find out. And then, you know, propose, we have only so much wall space, and and then you can make a proposal to us. And during a meeting, we can go down there with these eight plaques, and we're gonna say, okay, this is where they're gonna, I mean, we have this wall right here, but.
Yeah.
This is upstairs, but it's a possibility.
Yeah.
This is a nice built, nice.
I mean, we certainly have, around the clock would be a good choice, around the this side would be.
Yeah.
Over here would be a good choice.
Because he mentioned you.
But we should have.
In long term, we do not have enough room to hang a zillion in the hall, always, so I guess we should be turned determined.
But I would say the the twenty-year service warrants or more, the twenty-year rewards should be given.
Down.
First first priority, no matter what. And they should be stacked up, I'll say in reverse chronological order, the older ones are farther away, and the newer ones are up close.
Hey, start with that, that'll be your task, and by next meeting, we're gonna have a resolution. And then we also discussed at last meeting about we paid paid for also that um.
Information.
Information center.
Yeah.
We weren't, I don't think we ever determined exactly where we were gonna put it, but we did pay for it.
Right, have have you found out to figure out where that is, you know?
I was supposed to get uh, if I asked to uh get uh Mike Lacos's uh email at the um at the prison, and I'll reach out to him, but I never got that email.
I'll get that email to you tomorrow, David.
So he's the one that emailed us something on the uh kitchen cupboard, so you should be able to find him.
Yeah.
I know, he'll get it to you tomorrow.
Is he?
I'll read, I know Mike, I'll reach out to him, see what's going on, if it's the same department.
He's the guy, he's in the same department, making.
Yeah, that makes the covers.
Okay. Because we may, depending on what that looks like, possibly some could go on that, depending on, you know, maybe, and we may want to that center out front. We may want to put it in Lady Bird Park, we may, I guess.
There's a lot of options for that.
Deb, you wanna find when we sent that check, so David has that when he talks to him. It says he would pay.
Yep.
It could, it's been over a year now, I bet, or very close.
It was spring, we sent the checks, I don't know why I was here.
Okay, under other business, um, F, we're gonna discuss um.
This answers your report.
Okay, David.
Generally, David.
I married my comments first.
Well, I guess I I wanna know going with having with this.
Right, is this a, is this report on this report, is this a different amount than what we originally had thought?
Uh, I don't think so.
No, this is the same amount.
So then why do we even have to have a discussion?
Well, it just seems a little thing for the amount of money we spent, aside from the math attached to it. It's just a lot of money for a very thin report that sort of came.
Oh, so this is, this has to do with what we're paying.
This is the whole.
Whole fifty-two million dollar review of news from my.
This is their, is their reappraisal.
Yeah. And there's more math attached to this that.
The.
Where is, is that under the document PDF you sent?
No, this is, this was added in, this was not in.
This was not, yeah.
That's their check.
So the original contract was for fifty thousand dollars to do the four utilities plus uh waste USA. So does it coincide with that?
I don't think their fee is what we're talking about.
No, the one is the same amount.
Then, no.
Okay, so I guess that's why I wanted to.
So let me, I can clarify why I asked that to bring this up, just. And that's because I I think it's, we just need to make clear how he arrived at his number in general, so that you've, you've got some feel for that. He he talks in the report about the three different valuation approaches that he used. Uh, one was what I think of as the traditional approach that the listers or now the assessors use for properties in the town, and that's what's it worth on the market? Uh, the land and the building on it kind of approach. Uh, another approach, uh, let me get to the right page here.
And you're talking about the actual.
There we go.
Number.
No, you also consider having concern, you, you're looking, we want like next year, possibly, we may want to have more than just this little report. Else is gonna cost us a lot more money.
Well, um, I guess the bottom line is he used an income-based approach to arrive at his value. So he looked at what he thought the cash flow was for this landfill and used that with some sort of, I would say proprietary formula that he has. Because he didn't share that in the report and came up with the number. And that's, I think, the important point I just wanted to bring out before we fire off a check and make sure everybody's. I understand, yeah, yeah, it was an income-based approach. What is, what's the cash flow at this landfill? Okay, well, that's how he came up with a number. He used lots of different factors, and he details them to some extent in the report. But that's the bottom line. So if they grieve it next year or grieve it the year after, uh, and certainly they're gonna read that report, I would assume. Uh, it's probably gonna be based on, hey, our income is really whatever. Or if they'd never grieved it, we may think come to determine that, in fact, he didn't get the income numbers right, so I don't know.
You're just going, then maybe we want to have a better report than this one-page thing.
Oh, no, he's there, it's an extensive report, it's uh hundreds of pages long, there's four different parts to it. Uh, he's got all sorts of detailed footnotes and so forth and so on. Uh, the main thing to read is a thirty-eight-page report, and I know you don't want to wade through that, and I understand why. That's really for the assessors to do, and actually should be standing here giving you this talk instead of me, but um, since we need to mail him a check, it's a good time to do it. Uh, but it's. Uh, but it's, yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean to litigate the whole whether we pay him or not, or we need more or less, it's just to, to understand the basis of how he came up with this number, which was an income based approach, what's the cash flow at the landfill, he thinks. And here's why it's, that's why it's worth what he thinks it's worth.
Did you wanna have, you wanna reach out to him and have a, a call and call, talk with him?
I don't, I, I, I just, you know, it's, it's kind of the only time we get you guys together, this was the opportunity to say, just to give you that overview. Just a quick blurb, you know, it wasn't really to engage in any extensive discussion about whether we pay him or not, I, I think we should pay him, absolutely.
Um, but, but we're not, we're not appraising, we have to trust that we have to trust in this company that we hired that did every other appraisal, so I mean, we can't, and I think I mean, I'm, I'm not an appraiser, but I think the income based approach on that is, is probably uh, you know, probably the best way to go about it, cuz it's gonna be worth X amount of dollars as long as you're taking in X dollar, X, X amount of money and then eventually they're gonna take in no money and it's gonna have a negative value.
So yes, he, he details that in the report.
Yes, so.
I will email those to the assessors, which you have already, along with the, the board. Just so you have the whole thing.
So, I think, yeah, we have the chat. And, okay, well, thanks for bringing that to us, David.
Yeah, sorry, kind of.
Yeah.
Mushroomed. Yep, anyway, there it is.
Thanks. Um, okay, and then other business, we added E, Tangway, we're gonna discuss.
So there are two things that are happening, like one semi came up already, you were gonna talk to him about the ditch.
Yeah, I apologize that I got tied up.
How'd that come out?
It came out, he, I thought he was gonna be here tonight, it was a no show.
So is that Carter with the dish there and what's he wanting to do and what we're not, what?
Uh, he actually, he wants to essentially cover it all, or ha- or actually, let me add something. He wants to have us pipe it all and have the exit be nominally near our property line, maybe a foot or two from our property line, but somewhere, because uh, according to Tony, a person back there, U-Haul into the ditch, he had to get towed out. I told him quite flatly, that's, you know, okay, put up some fencing, put up some stuff to tell people not to back into the ditch.
So is it now, I heard a deed, the deed came up, David mentioned, is there anything in the deed on it or?
There's nothing in the deed, and it was, and he has found nothing in the deed, that, that there was an easement here. But it's clearly obvious, including when I spoke to Brian, that the ditch has been there a very long time. Because you can see that the concrete on either side is older, the pipe underneath the road is newer. Clearly a rebuild at some point in the near past, but you can see that it's clearly been there a very long period of time. More than likely when Main Street was still gravelled.
Mr. Gallup, how long has that ditch been there?
Forever.
Okay, so it's really not an obligation of the town to change, relocate it or?
Yeah, and I, I think too, it's going through the whole wrong process. So originally, he came and told me that he was gonna dig a ditch across the town property, put the water over there cuz it wasn't his water, I said, no, I'm not making that decision without the board. Then, he's told you that no, now it's up there by the road, how he wants to handle that. To me, that goes to a road commissioner uh, duty in uh, our culvert, our driveway permit. If he wants to do something different for an entrance, it goes into our uh, permit process.
And I informed Tony about that, if he wanted to relocate, that's a new permit. He can close down this one, make adjustments to this one, but it's a new driveway permit.
Would it, would that facility be better utilized by a different act at this point?
No.
Okay, doesn't make any difference, it's just what it is.
It, it, the way he described it, the way Tony described it, it was some yahoo who didn't know how to back up a U-Haul. That's not our responsibility, if you back it into a ditch, you know, that's, that's on you, it's not on him and it's not on us. So it's basically tough.
This is.
He's created, he's created his battle one on the backside with that uh, that one he put on, if you look at his uh, entrance from the highway, he's created just as tight a situation there. By putting in that new uh, storage unit, it's no different than the entrance he's got now.
Yeah, he's gonna have somebody rip the corner of the roof right off, yeah.
It's tight, he built a lot of proper, that's why there's no zoning and people do that, it's, it's tight, it's a lot of pro- a lot of building on a little Okay, alright, so I think that's enough discussion about that.
No, but David has a point that he should remove his, the soil and issues.
How much is that, guys, now there's a line there, but a lot. He graded it into ours.
I don't want his, I don't want his dirt on our property. What rights he got to do that?
Yeah, now, so.
He's thumbing, he's thumbing his nose at us, he told us at the last meeting, and if you listen to that audio, he, we got into it. I said, and by the way, your dirt's on our uh, property and I want it off, and he said, will. So it's been two weeks now, let's give him another two weeks, or otherwise we take it.
I will, I will send him a.
Call him.
I'll, 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 if he's there, I'll walk down and speak to him, he's not there, I'll send him a letter. And I'll send him, remove the dirt, you got two, three weeks and we want it done before the frost is in the ground. Is that okay with you, David, or David Gallup?
Well, it can't be just okay with me, it's gonna be okay with the board before you do any.
No, no.
No, we, we want the dirt off the town property, I mean, it's not a big deal, they built the building in three days, he can he can take care of the dirt in about twenty minutes, probably.
Yeah, it's literally a couple of guys with metal rags can get it all off, it's not that hard.
I guess that's where I was going, it's not a lot of dirt, why are we? Spending time on it.
Yep.
I, 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 I think, Dave Gallup has a very valid point. A little is one thing, we'll go to a little more and then a little more and then, you know, he's building a ditch across our land. No, not, you know, none is okay.
If you'd have done that to Tony Tangway's land, you'd be in court right now, get it off there.
No.
Okay.
I'll send him a letter this week.
Anybody else have any other business?
Yes, actually. Okay, uh, I, I just real quick, are, would it be okay to uh, work on getting another round of advertising out on the church roof? This time, a very specifically focused on a standing seam. Roof.
That would be, yes.
I will send it out.
Well, yeah, Ned, let's, let's you and I talk about the approach and how we might do it, some, add something new to entice or something.
Right.
Uh, recognizing we're probably not gonna get it done until the next season.
So I have, um, I have a list of a couple um, names that uh, Frank Carbono gave me, and I'll get that to Ned or to both of you, and you guys can reach out to these people. Um, he gave me the list because I think he would like to sell the metal. So I mean, I'm like, well, you know, if, if we can hire the contractor, we don't really care whether they buy the metal, that's up to them, but um.
Sure.
So I, I'll get to those names, I haven't, I just haven't forwarded it over.
I mean, I, I'm assuming that's what we wanna go with, standing seam metal roofs.
Absolutely, hundred here.
Up there, that makes sense.
And there's not a, there's, there's really no historic mandate to return to wood shingles, thankfully, we can we can move on from that, okay?
So uh, are we gonna put like snow guards, cuz I, I'm just having uh, horror pictures of snow coming off that roof at sixty feet.
Absolute, rows of them, whatever's recommended.
We, uh, I had the proposal, three layers of snow guard, so snow guards no matter what.
Well, like, but we need to be, we need to work on that, um to be specific, so that when they bid, we don't end up with a bunch of weight, uncomparable stuff. Uh, assuming we're gonna get some bids.
So we'll do the roof, we'll do the roof itself, separate bid for recommend, recommendations on snow guards and have them break it down per foot or per row, cuz they come singly or double rows together, you know, you have two bars across and uh, keep it separate from the roof. Cuz it'd be easier to compare, and then we could say, well, you know, you're, you're good on the roof, but your snow guard price is five thousand dollars more than you know, someone else.
Okay.
Any other business, Martha?
Okay, so um, I apologize if I'm beating a dead horse, but um, um um, I've, I have concerns, um, a little bit more than normal because I'm having a hard time finding information. So I um, wanna bring up the fact that when we had Amanda as our town administrator. Everything that had to do with the landfill, their permit, their obligations, anything the state put out. It was sent to Amanda. It was very easily accessible, it was very easily discussed. Um, since Amanda has left, we, um, there obviously are huge PFAS concerns and um I've asked several times, Casella has been to the select board table and still not answered the questions about what they're doing with the leach aid. There's a new water permit that's come out that I have not got my hands on yet, and I've been just catching glimpses of secondhand information from water activists and alike, but um the state has put, um, said that Newport can't take the leach aid because of the filtration and stuff. So I was looking for information about how they're gonna onsite treat this. I've yet to see this, but I also am hearing that they're also trying to take leach aid from out of state and bring it into Coventry. Now, if we can't handle, if Vermont's infrastructure can't handle this, and we don't know what to do with this ever changing cancer causing forever chemicals. I, I think somebody in the town needs to be paying better attention and we need to really be given any access to the information flowing as freely as possible. I was quite concerned that nobody in our town was told about the big in- international water meeting that happened. I called out the Secretary of State about it, um, A and R Secretary, um um, because, I mean, Pedro was there, but Pedro was there as a Newport representative. So I, I think that, I, I don't want any of us to get blindsided, there's a lot of things going on and Casella is a very heated topic in several states, and the more I learn the more concerning I'm get about who is protecting our town. Um, the state's looking after its interest, Casella's looking after its interest, who's looking after our interest? And if I'm not finding the information, and I'm supposedly the town's and I'm not understanding what's going on, I don't know who in the town is. And I think that we really need to start having that flow of information from the state back to the town and whoever requests it from our town administrator it flows to. I, I think that there's potentials for a lot of scary things internationally. Um, and it's a lot of unknown, so I think that we really need to kind of pay more attention to that.
All right, Martha, where did you come up with, where did you hear that Casella is taking additional leach aid, they're having a hard time getting rid of the leach aid they have, so I don't, I don't believe they're taking in any additional leach aid in?
So their new permit is actually to bring in from New York and New Hampshire. And I apologize, I seen it on Facebook and it's down, that's why I said I wish I was more um, prepared for this, cuz you know, I'll send you screenshots when I find stuff. You know, and, and I think that has, um, that makes absolutely no sense, but there was a lot of other things that we also weren't aware of, that Mike actually went back and Amanda went back and fixed to protect the town. So I'm not, I'm not trying to point any fingers, but I think we really need to be paying attention as to what's flowing in and out, I mean, we already know that Casella doesn't check what's coming in and out um, per load, and I mean theoretically, realistically, they can't. So I mean, we, we just need to be paying more attention and looking at the logistics of it, and there is a new um, they are asking for more permits with the state, but like I said, I didn't actually see the document, I a picture of the document where it says that they are asking to be able to haul in leach aid from New Hampshire and leach aid from New York. Now, I don't know if they currently do that or not, because I can't find these documents. Normally, I would just say, hey, Amanda, what's this document, and she would send it to me. I don't, I don't even know who Ned, I don't even think Ned is even getting the documents from the agency of natural re- resources.
So, we're gonna look into that, and I think it's a good point, and um, you know, I haven't talked to Joe and Jeremy in a while, so put him on the agenda, we're gonna call him in for a meeting and just ask him what's going on. It's possible, and this is just, just a theory that I'm putting together since you brought this information to me, is I'm thinking it's possible that maybe Casella is thinking about building a leach aid treatment center, and it probably costs hundreds of millions or fifty a million dollars, or who even knows? So he's probably thinking, if I'm gonna build this facility, I need more leach aid than what I, what I currently create myself, so can I get, get the income from these other landfills in these other states and bring it here and treat it all? But that's, you know, that may be something they're working on and, and we, we don't know anything about it, um.
Get the nail on the head exactly what I'm talking about, Scott, the, the, the landfill is not prime target to be doing that. That's how Newport has already had to stop it, because there's already ten years old a tumor of uh, fish. The fish have tumors in South Bay, like they've already encroached on the, the um, wetlands, like there goes, there's test results that go back seven years or so, where there's, you know, the wells are testing, that they're starting contaminating. Like they're actually showing detections of it. And like I said, i- it's not for like, one little person to, but I also, we also have Canada who has, there, there was several Canadian legislators on, at this water meeting that no town representative was even aware of the meeting was happening. I mean, Pedro sent me a text message, said, hey, I texted Phil today and told Phil, well, what's Phil supposed to do eight hours before a meeting? Do you understand what I'm saying? Should be informing us, we should be knowing what are in these documents, we should be knowing what Casella is asking. And we shouldn't be saying, let's make this the leach aid capital, when Canada's saying, no, you're poaching on our water. There's a lot of, there, there needs to be some kind of, some way to protect us to at least know what's going on.
We, we need to stop the rant here for a minute, because uh, it's not really factual.
Right, so.
I mean, I understand there's, when you read Facebook, you can get upset, I got it. Uh, but consider the source, the, Casella hosted a meeting at Coventry, right there at the community center where the select board is currently sitting on September eighth or tenth, something like that, like they do every six months and discussed everything that was going on and planned for the landfill. Um, I think what we'll find is the leach aid thing is, is again misinformation blown out of hand, the state is requiring Casella to develop a test of removal of PFAS from leach aid onsite. Uh, there is in no way any plan that I'm aware of, and I was there with the press uh, to import leach aid for that experiment, I mean, that's, that would be nuts, there's plenty of leach aid right at Coventry that you can conduct all that experimentation, as the state is mandating, it's not Casella that's doing it, it's the state.
Excuse me, um, this is Joseph Gresser from the Chronicle, and I might be able to help a little bit. There is leach aid coming in from out of state and being trucked directly to Montpelier where it is going into their water treatment plant, nothing's coming to Coventry. Um, it's in the permit, um, but it has nothing to do with the treatment as yet, and it isn't headed for Coventry.
So is there wastewater that permit?
So is there wastewater that permit affect all of this, their stuff with the state?
So, so I, I, I would just want to clarify, I'm not saying any out of state leach aid is coming in yet. And, and what I'm saying is that we should know what this, what the new things are that are requesting. Because if they're going to try to do, to treat onsite. How is, how does that affect South Bay? How does that affect what the Canadians are saying? I'm not even clear what the Canadians are saying. Well, I would love to see these documents, and that is my point. As a Coventry resident, we should be, I should be seeing these documents like I was previously when Amanda was here. And the state should also be informing the town every time there's a meeting. And I would have loved to have gone remotely to that meeting, but I was quarantining because of COVID. I had every intention, and had I not known that, that landfill oversight um. Was not posted anywhere but on the door, and I didn't know about it until. Um, Ned actually told me, but there was no way for me to join that meeting remotely. I would have loved to have asked these questions.
Oh, they hosted on, they hosted it on Zoom, it was on Zoom. But anyway, I, I don't mean to get in a. Argument about it.
Well, thanks Martha too for the information and Dave.
Yeah, I, I guess I in general agree, we need to. Keep visibility on the whole thing, um, the, the state documents are available on the A and R website. Uh, which I will admit is cryptic. But they are there. Over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
So I did. Maybe those, like I just see the email that they had their meeting, maybe send that out, just like any normal meeting. Do that. It, it more than likely will be a couple of days in advance, not, you know, that story for the town, but.
When was Joey, Joe was here in September?
September eight, there was a meeting.
Landfill oversight committee came in and used the boardroom.
Yep. Yeah, the next one will be probably in February.
Yes.
I didn't know about that.
I didn't know about it.
It was one email, October first, we sent the email out to us every September.
And my, my last question is, so which one of the board members or what's town representative is actually? The person that is the liaison to all of these meetings and trying to keep everything all in one bundle? I mean, it's, it's chaotic, I don't, I don't know how we, we handle that.
That would be me, Martha.
So Ned goes to all of these meetings, he participates at the, at the nightly meetings, he represents the town at all of the. Discussions.
Well, I think we're only talking about one so far that we've missed.
Maybe two. But yes.
There, there's been other, like I said, there's been other meetings where the leach aid has been discussed and. The Canadians have been at the table, but Coventry has not. Cassella has, the state has, but Coventry hasn't.
Dave was there, right?
Yes, they participated.
I, I was, I was at the eighth September meeting that was right here at the Coventry Community Center, but um. I'm not sure of the value of chasing every leach aid meeting. For the town.
Does Cassella have to go through with us, they just go through this like what were the changes in their proposal policies or?
They have to go through that uh, go through us, and they do have to go through the state, the state would inform us to be. Statutory party to.
I will thank you, Martha, thanks Dave. Do we have any other business?
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Okay, moving on, warrants. Thanks again, Deb, you're consistent.
You're welcome. There is one on the general um, package I sent you today, a check for David Barlow that we are voiding. Um, I did have a question in regards to it, he did answer me, I took his answer incorrectly. Uh, so again, we'll be voiding his check and reissuing it for the correct amount. And then I got another question for Ned, actually, when you folks started talking about our. Uh, town attorney, I don't think I've seen any legal bills from our town attorney recently.
I haven't seen any either, and I, because I took, well, I think we were lucky because I took care of it by the phone. And a couple of quick email messages, I think, and I'm air quotes, hi, you're Deb. I think we lucked out and we may not see a bill for that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we aren't missing. Any that are out there that we're just not aware of.
Now there. Brian and I. Well, if, if there's a bill from Brian, I will put it through, no matter what.
Okay.
We're taking out of Ned's pay.
Well, actually, well, Scott, David Barton, David Gallo, how did the gravel shoulder work go with uh? Over the un fried, excuse me, uh, Thursday Friday last week?
The shoulder work?
Yes.
Very good.
Very good, it survived through the rain on Saturday, just fine?
Yeah, we didn't have, we didn't have heavy rain.
Oh, good, okay, I'm glad to hear that. They, they seem to be doing a pretty good job.
They did, cause it's a week and a half for me, and I ain't got a week and a half to blow on it right now. They can do it in a day with their machine.
Yeah, no, I, I thought that four thousand extra was the money well spent.
Well, hang in there, cause there's more to come on that.
Oh, okay.
Cause I had to make, I made the material out of our pit, you're gonna be getting two bills from C cards. Ones for the shoulder material. Then I had them crush uh, two thousand yards of uh gravel for me, for my uh roads.
We haven't received those yet.
No, yeah, we're definitely.
But I, I, I made a note on the uh. On the pipe contract, I handed it in to you.
Yeah.
Did you go and check this one, she's gonna void?
Yeah, go, go pull it out.
Okay, so I guess warrants.
Or warrants.
David, you looked at the warrants.
So I'm looking at AP for review, is that the wrong one?
No, that's the right one.
Nine thirteen.
You.
Oh, God, no, yes, should be ten four, today's date.
She sent it out this morning. No, can, no, not that, the um. Minutes, get the minutes up.
I think some of the biggest ones for you, Dave, was uh, Gagnon came in this morning, dropped off. An invoice for some ditching that he did that I went and included within the general AP. And then I got a separate warrant in there for the uh, pipe for what they have billed thus far. Coming out of the reserve. For roads.
That's a, does it fee?
Mm-hmm, it should have been all by itself with its own separate warrant.
This gag, hey, that's a Gagnon, Bernard Gag, Gagnon?
Yes, yeah.
Do you want to know the? Yeah, two thousand fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Yeah, how do you, how do you pronounce his name?
Gagnon? Gagnon?
Gagnon, yeah, geez, I was saying it wrong all along, holy.
Uh, I, I think it's actually Gonya, but I, I call it.
I would say.
Gonya is like G O N Y, Y and W. I like Gagnon.
Gagnon. Yeah. But I only ever call Bernie then. Cause I would have butchered the last name.
Cause then the rest were all basically normal ones. Excluding the new electrical for the church.
Do you see how much the Comcast dropped? Although that's, that's temporary.
The three cents?
No, Comcast.
No, that was Vermont Electric, actually.
I was Vermont Electric, I was like, why did you spend the money on writing a three cent check?
It's all combined together. If it would have been its own separate check, no, they would have waited till next month. But because we have six to pay, I included it within that. So we are in good standum.
I'm guessing that Comcast bill is gonna go up this next time, but it should be steadied off now.
Okay.
Cause it was all the pro read.
Should have mentioned to you guys on, when we were talking about the park lighting, I've reached out to uh. Troy, and I can't think who he put me through, Denise or somebody to uh, get that light repaired in the park.
Jay, yeah, cause I've been out for a while.
Yeah.
I wonder if they could put an LED up instead of the middle halo.
Well, she asked, and I didn't really know, I told her to light it up because I, we weren't paying for it, so.
The LED would definitely make brighter.
Would it?
Oh, yeah. Just a minute, and I wonder, are you gonna talk to them again, or are they doing it?
I can talk to them anytime.
Cause I was wondering if they're doing, if they're up there replacing, I wonder if it's, if they could spin it to the other side of the pole in the parking lot side.
Yeah, I know, I wish I'd have. About to say that to them, cause I, I really think if we did that, you know, we'd have enough light there that.
I, I, I'd like to see if. They're able to change it to one of the LEDs, cause these are LEDs in town, change it to that and spin it, and then we can see how it works.
You think those are brighter in town? I didn't like them in town.
Oh, I don't like these, there's brighter ones in other places though.
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll make a note to reach out to Troy. See if I, you guys wanna try spinning the light?
Do we want to ourselves?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to see it done, but myself, doing it myself, probably not. So, number eight warrants, I'm gonna make a motion that uh, we accept the warrants. All second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number nine minutes, September twentieth meeting.
I just wanted to know, I said for the record that uh, the Secretary of State. Had given out uh, one award for a public service last year, and that was for Bradley Maxwell, and I would like that noted in the minutes. And I'd like to see that certificate on the wall as soon as possible.
As soon as it arrives, David, I will put it up.
It is now in the minutes, obviously, yeah.
So could you put that in the minutes, that there was one given, to our knowledge?
Or accept the next week, or accept them with that? I say we accept them with the, yeah. Brad Maxwell's award. Okay. I second. All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, again, thanks for your input and um. See you in a couple of weeks.
Have a good one.
Very nice.
Oh, hey.
Yeah.
So uh. I do have an email into uh, Tim Ruggles, remember I mentioned uh, I wanted to do some engineering up there by your pond, uh by um. Your neighbor's pond, Mr. Broyer.
Oh, Rogers?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So if. If I'm lucky at all and I can get Tim, he's a busy man, um, I'll try to set it up where me and him and um. Mike can look at what we should do to get that water situation straightened out before we pave that road, have a mass.
What's the water situation? Just, it really just is a lot of pressure, and it makes a bunch of potholes there. Yes, from his pond, right, to that's to the left, that's looking at your driveway pond here. To the, yeah, to the left, the coverage to the left, but it's on the right side of the road, if you're headed to Newport. Yeah.
So just wanted to wear that I had reached out to him, I just haven't heard from him.
While you're doing that, keep this in mind, and I, cause I haven't moved on it, and maybe I, I don't know, I gotta talk to Peter too. I'm seeing about moving your dry hydrant down to that pond. Oh, my dad's. Your dad's. Yeah, it ends up, his pond ends up. Doesn't work, it's pointless. And that, there has more water. So, with um. I guess we're. We'd have to reach, we'd have to, so we kind of adjourned, I guess. No, so we didn't really, we're, we're. We adjourned it not, we're. We're unadjourning it, and so technically not adjourned. I, under other business, so David, so. Norm Patno, you know, he said Derby was on board, and if there could do Pine Hill, and I told him to talk to the road commissioner. If they were to do that. Pine Hill and all the way in Derby. Are you on paving now? Yeah, okay, on paving, um, if they were to do the road. Would you recommend that Norm leaves out that stretch by the pond and then does that later?
Why would you, why would you do it, Scott, it's gonna?
You, you're seasoning to do Pine Hill, and then do that now, okay.
Do it, do it once.
Let's, so you're gonna get this.
Do it once and do our best we can, and then uh. Go from there. I know you, I know you like to get it done, and I would too, but. Just don't think we should hurry through it and then have a mass next, you know, you could get into January, have a thaw, and then that road blows up, and we all look like damn fools.
Yep.
Let's, let's do it right once.
Is there a drain there? Under the road? There is um. Is a culvert under the road.
Yeah.
We have culverts, it's just Mike filled in the ditches, put some DIs. Um, just, just over time, everything's moved toward the road.
Yeah.
And we, I'd put it, I'd put it in my proposal to get those. Ditches down to the original level, and we wouldn't have to have, I think. Once I meet with Tim and Mike, I think what we could do is just basically do something. Pretty farmerish and just put some drainage ditch tile in there and get it down to that level, fill it with stone, and he can still have a nice, we can still have a nice uh. Place to mow beside his pond.
So you're, you're thinking he just has it too high, too close to the road, and the ditch, that's what's causing the problem?
Yeah, those ditches, if you uh, look in the spring when you got a lot of water. Basically, all that water just goes un, goes under the road. Doesn't get to the culverts.
Wow, this groundwater pressure coming from the pond to the earth underneath the road.
All right, so that'd be, that'd be great, so you're gonna reach out to Mike and you get the engineer up there and look at it, and he'll give you some suggestions, and hopefully you guys will agree and.
Yeah.
All right, Mike's the owner. Yeah. So, can we think about the dry hydrant too, while we're thinking on this?
Sure. I'll bring it up to.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna uh, figure out from this. Date to see how that works with moving hydrant, cause that's all state money, so.
Yeah.
Didn't be too big a deal, huh? I wouldn't think so, especially if you can't use it. Well, especially if they're gonna be digging up the ditch anyway, they could put it in while they're there. We just need a good pad that we can park a truck onto, it's open. He does have a good pad there.
Yeah, he's got a good drive on both sides, actually.
That was full. That was always full.
Yeah, I think it has.
No? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, again, I think it's. Any other business? Okay, warrant, the warrants are approved, the minutes are approved. Motion to adjourn? I was thinking, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thanks.